Good afternoon. I'd like to call this town council meeting of Tuesday, November 4th, 2025 to order. If you will join in saying the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, a nation, a God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you'll continue standing while we have Reverend Jonathan Hockins from St. Andrews by the Sea give the invocation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In light of the proclamation that's being presented today for the community Thanksgiving meal, I wanted to offer one of the dining room blessings that we normally offer on the day at Hudson's. This is a blessing for the dining room, but I felt that it was appropriate for today as well. So let us pray. May all be welcomed here, friend and stranger, near and far. May each be blessed and honored as they enter. There is a friend's love in the gentle heart of the Savior. For love of Him, we offer friendship and welcome every guest. Seeing a stranger approach, may we put food in the eating place, drink in the drinking place, and look with joy for the blessing of God, who often comes to us in the blessing of a stranger. In the name of God, our provider, amen.
Mr. Orlando, do we have any changes to the agenda this evening?
No, sir.
But that is their motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
First and second. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. So moved six zero. Quick note, Ms. Becker is out of town and she might be joining us via Teams, so we'll keep an eye out there for her. Next, we have the regular meeting minutes of October 21st, 2025. Is there a motion to approve? Second? Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. So moved six to zero. Next up, we'll hear from the town manager, Mr. Orlando, for your reports.
Yes, sir. Good afternoon, Mayor Council, members of the public. We've got a few things to update on today. I'm excited about all of them, so bear with me. Pre-nourishment, we are on track and on schedule. As you've seen, the construction of breakwater structures at Pine Islands moving forward. And so if you're down there, just know it'll take the next several months to complete that. So the area remains closed at this time. Meanwhile, we're demobilizing sand replacement equipment at Pine Island and taking it to Islanders. And so Islanders has had some intermittent closures as well. So plans to start pumping sand out at the heel by the end of this week, I believe. So great news. Projects moving forward. If you haven't put your eyes on the project itself during or after, please do. We're very proud of it and appreciate Jeff Netzinger, our Director of Engineering, his team and the contractors that are helping us. Aside from that, some additional smaller capital project updates that I just think add some value knowing about them. Know that the Hawk Signal on South Forest Beach at Coligny Circle has been improved. There's been some signal improvements, including replacement of signs, trying to provide some better clarity and installation of some public safety elements down there to make it safer for pedestrians and vehicles, especially at that crosswalk. Traffic signal improvements on Palmetto Bay Road. I've received a couple of calls about that. The signal heads were replaced at the intersections of Arrow and Target, and this is bringing the signals to the current standards with yellow arrows for left turn. So I think that's made a big improvement in that area. Traffic signal reliability, as we talked to you about in the past, we are starting to install the dark fiber for the connectivity of our adaptive signal. Seventeen are complete. For the public, you're not going to notice much, but for us, we're starting to realize the improved reliability that reduces the risk of intermittent communication gaps and failures in those systems. So we have shown and measured that it's improved the movement of traffic at a slower, safer, more effective and efficient speed through our island. And so the dark fiber is one of those next larger steps for the system. Palmetto Hall drainage system and outfall improvements. In September, some water level monitoring devices were installed at nine ponds in Palmetto Hall to help with monitoring water levels and assisting in pre-storm preparation. So good job to the stormwater team. A large diameter pipe at Spanish Wells that collapsed during Tropical Storm Debbie has been successfully replaced, and that pipe's responsible for protecting a significant portion of the Spanish Wells community. Taylor Family Park groundbreaking is tentatively scheduled for December 8th. Kim, do I have that correct-ish? Not to put you on the spot, but no, Mayor and Council, we invited you, the families, the neighborhood, the community, and so we're planning and preparing for a great event on December 8th. Shortly after that, we'll figure out Patterson Park as well. We anticipate being under construction on both of those projects very soon. Mitchellville Road paving, reconstruction and paving of Mitchellville Road is beginning this week and should be complete weather pending, contractor and equipment pending by the end of the calendar year. Coligny Pocket Park is under construction and on schedule for completion in the spring. Our project on William Hilton Parkway between Dillon Road and Beach City Road, for the most part's complete. We see some things out there that we need to improve in terms of lighting in a few conflict areas, but for the most part, that's complete, less some punch-out items. And then the Jonesville Road stables, the paddocks and the stables, that request for qualifications out forbid. We've already had some early responses to the package, and so we're looking forward to receiving those at the completion date. Our Gully-Geechee Historic Neighborhood CDC, as part of their Money Talk series, are hosting a free mini expo event on November 18th from 1:00 to 5:00 at Island Rec. So the community, small business owners, and whomever else can learn more about how to do business with the town. And our executive director, Thomas Boxley, and his team, a small team, but the community team as well that helps, will host a panel discussion on this topic on November 18th, 1:00 to 5:00 at Island Rec. Couple more things. Cultural Affairs, Office of Cultural Affairs Lantern Parade, November 22nd, from 5:30 to 7:00. Plus, communications have been released. There is a new parade route this year, so stay tuned for that. As you're down there, expect some different variables. And I want to remind everybody, actually Angie's voice here, and I appreciate her, wants to remind the community that if it's difficult for you or someone you know to get out onto the beach, the parade ends at Low Country Celebration Park. And so you can remain at Low Country Celebration Park, and the parade, the music, the food, the drinks, and everything else comes to you. Hilton Head Oyster Festival, November 7th. Veterans Day Ceremony, November 11th. Turkey Trot, November 27th. The Hilton Head Island Tree Lighting, the Holiday Tree Lighting, on December 5th. The menorah lighting on December 14th. And I forgot one here, Winter Wonderland Festival, December 6th. So lots of events, lots of events to plan for. All of this, and I say that all of this is on our Office of Cultural Affairs community calendar on our website. So that's the place for all your information. Couple more. Congrats to our 911 Public Safety Telecommunicator, Haley Becker, for receiving the Palmetto Award at the South Carolina AppCo Nina Conference. I meant to ask Chief what that meant. The Palmetto Award honors a telecommunicator who exemplifies a positive attitude, great teamwork, professionalism, pride in their work. And this is pretty big and significant recognition. So congratulations to Haley for her dedication and excellence in serving our community. Couple other things, a couple leadership position announcements. Where are, I see where they are. Dave Byrd, our Finance Director. Dave, hello, sir. Dave is our brand-new, two days in, and I'm very pleased to share that Dave has joined us, Dave, as our Finance Director in our Finance Department. So a little bit about Dave. He's past served as the Director of Finance for the town of Breckenridge, Colorado, in charge of all the same things that we need help with here: budgeting, financial reporting, audits, leadership, compliance, and just leading our team and taking care of our revenues and our expenditures and providing that financial and accounting leadership. Dave holds a Bachelor of Business Admin and Accounting and a Master's in Science in Management Information Systems from U of Texas and is also a certified public accountant. So Dave, welcome and thank you. Next, Zach Gordon. There's Zach. Hello, sir. When they started yesterday, I won't quote anybody, but someone said, "There's the money and there's the funny." So we're gonna find out, we're gonna find out if that's true or not. But Zach joins us as our Planning Director, and he started yesterday, and it's been a long time coming as we've looked to replace this very, very important position. Zach brings more than 30 years' experience in planning and community development across several states with leadership roles in municipal government and the private sector. And most recently, Zach was a Planning Director in Harrisburg, North Carolina, but also Kannapolis, Exeter, New Hampshire, Kannapolis, North Carolina, and a few other places. He's got a Master's in Regional Planning from Cornell, Bachelor of Science in Political Science from University of New York, State University of New York, and a whole bunch of other things in his bio that make him, what I believe both him and Dave, very significant leaders in their business, as well as we're ecstatic to have them here on our team. So welcome, sir. That concludes my report.
All right. Thank you. So on behalf of Mark, he is more than ecstatic to have you all here, right? So, and we all are too, but definitely welcome. So now I'll move on to some presentations and recognitions. All right. This is on, right? Okay. So first, we have our Beaufort County School District's Student of the Month. Would Evelyn Sanchez-Cadiano from Hilton Head Island Creative Arts Elementary School please come forward? So Evelyn is here with her mom and her brother, right? How are you today? Good. So, you know, you have been chosen because of your traits for September, and the process of being received is adequate and/or sustainable typically to be admitted into a group or receive others. But you have been awarded the Student of the Month, and I want to give you a couple things. One, this certificate, which is suitable for framing. It's a joke. Okay, there's that. And here is a coin from the... Okay, and these are for you. All right. So let's give it up for Evelyn. All right. Thank you. Congratulations. And I should say that her principal was here as well. So next, we will move on to the Smoke-Free and Vape-Free Awareness Month proclamation, which will be accepted by Ashling Lewis, President for Teens for Healthy Youth of Hilton Head Island High School, on behalf of Low Country Alliance for Healthy Youth. If you'll, y'all coming up, please. You've got a speech written up. Come on. Good for you. Okay, the town of Hilton Head Island Smoke-Free and Vape-Free Awareness Month proclamation. Whereas smoking remains the leading cause of preventable death in the United States, and many youth who start smoking by age 11 are addicted by age 14. And whereas e-cigarette use, also called vaping, has become increasingly common among youth and adults and has increased among all adolescent demographic groups. And whereas e-cigarettes contain nicotine and other harmful substances to the developing brain, leading to negative impacts on attention and learning, and nicotine exposure during adolescence can harm brain development and lead to addiction. Whereas many of the e-cigarette particles contain toxic chemicals, which have been linked to heart and respiratory disease and cancer. And whereas the American Heart Association, American Lung Association, and the American Cancer Association have proclaimed vaping a serious public health issue. And whereas the e-cigarette use pandemic created an urgent need for education and resources to prevent and reduce youth and adult vaping. And whereas the Low Country Alliance for Healthy Youth and Teens for Healthy Youth are working to educate and increase awareness about the dangers of youth vaping. And whereas in June 2024, through a proposal by Teens for
And whereas in June 2024, through a proposal by Teens for Healthy Youth, the Town of Hilton Head Island voted unanimously to amend the town's smoking regulations by adding electronic smoking devices. And whereas together we can effect change to prevent and reduce smoking and vaping use and be the best advocates for promoting positive choices and healthy lifestyles for our youth. Now therefore, I, Allen R. Perry, Mayor of the Town of Hilton Head Island, South Carolina, do hereby proclaim this month, November, as Smoke Free and Vape Free Awareness Month. Congratulations.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Town Council. My name is Ashling Lewis.
My name is Sarah Hill.
I'm Emily Coff. On behalf of Low Country Alliance for Healthy Youth and their youth coalition Teens for Healthy Youth, thank you Mayor Perry for issuing the Smoke Free and Vape Free Month Proclamation. We would like to express our gratitude to you and to Town Council when, through a proposal by Teens for Healthy Youth, the Town Council unanimously voted to amend the town's smoking regulations by adding electronic smoking devices. Including vaping in the town's smoking ordinance sends a clear message to our youth and our residents that, like smoking, vaping is a serious public health issue. Thank you, Mayor Perry and Town Council.
Thank you. Now we gotta get pictures. Awesome. Thank you all so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Let's see. Next, we have the Community Thanksgiving Proclamation, and here to accept it. Wait a minute. That's Pastor Jonathan Topkins, yeah, and Leslie Callahan, St. Andrew's by the Sea, and Andrew Carmine from Hudson's Restaurant. Drew me off there for a second. I was like, wait, I just announced him. Well, I've got to read it between the ribbons. The Town of Hilton Head Island Annual Thanksgiving Community Dinner Proclamation. Whereas the annual Thanksgiving Community Dinner held on Hilton Head Island in South Carolina is celebrating its 26th anniversary. And whereas the annual Community Thanksgiving Dinner celebrates and offers a free community family-style dinner with over 300 volunteers serving more than 1,500 guests. And whereas the dinner provides comfort and a sense of belonging on Thanksgiving Day. In the true spirit of the holidays, donations collected and distributed to Deepwell, left in self-help, and second helpings provide resources to those who need them most. And whereas this wonderful day could not happen if it weren't for the founding partners and hosts giving their love to this project. St. Andrews by the Sea United Methodist Church and Hudson's Seafood on the Docks. Now therefore, I, Allen R. Perry, Mayor of the Town of Hilton Head Island, South Carolina, do hereby proclaim November 27th, 2025, as a day of appreciation for the founding sponsors, volunteers, and participants of the annual Thanksgiving Day Dinner. Congratulations. Thank you. Awesome. Thank you all so much. Let's hear it for our youth today again, one more time. All right, next up, we will have an update from the Hilton Head Island Airport by Mr. John Rembold, Beaufort County Airport's Director.
Good afternoon. Thanks for having me. Pick a microphone here. It's been a while since I've given you an update, and since we had several of you out to the airport last month, we figured it was good to come in and kind of show you again what's going on at the airport. All right, so this is our mission, and this is really how our team kind of interacts with the transportation system. This is what we do and how we do it at the airport. And as the saying goes in the airport world, a mile of road will take you a mile, but a mile of runway will take you anywhere in the world. So we're pleased to be able to provide that to our residents here on the island. I say we're here to serve. An interesting point about the airport is that the airport here on the island is the smallest airport geographically. It's the smallest air carrier airport in the U.S. geographically. And you can see what we're serving. We're serving the number one island in the U.S., and we actually cracked the top 10 on USA Today's list for resort airports this year, even though we're under construction. So I think they see the potential there. But we do have a pretty good reach in serving the tourists who visit here as well as the residents as your hometown airport. So we're happy to provide that service. Hopefully y'all recognize some of this, or some of you do. Mr. Mayor, you the only one who rode? How'd you feel after that?
It was great.
Yeah, you ready to buy one?
Uh, no.
Well, that's a unique opportunity that we have at the airport to team with the concourse, and it's really because we all were a small airport, so we were able to put that on. It was interesting because that evening, we actually had a plane that was delayed to have the maintenance checked on on it. So we kind of fit these drives in while that airplane was waiting. So we had people in the terminal and a flight crew who had no idea why we had cars racing up and down the taxiway. So we answered a few questions, but everything was to their satisfaction, so it was good. But we're happy to provide this. It's a great event every year, so very exciting. This is about a year ago. This is what the terminal looked like about a year ago. This is last November as we just started to put up the steel. There's another shot from some night work during November. And now we'll get to present day. This is yesterday. And so I took a couple of shots yesterday. You can see that your DRB did a fabulous job as they reviewed this. We spent a lot of time with our stakeholder group and coordinating early with the DRB to make sure that we had that Low Country aesthetic really nailed here. So I think you see that throughout this building. That's another shot of your, one of the main entrances in the new park. Here's one from a little distance, and we're gonna tuck around back and just let you see a little bit more of the kind of the Low Country decor and what that looks like there. So you've got the segmented windows there. You see two different roofs, so we're gonna fix that in Phase 2. So we'll ask you for your considerations as we move to Phase 2. This is the back of the building where the jets will be pulling up, and we will have jet bridges. So that's an exciting addition to this new terminal building so that you don't have to deal with the summer heat or those pesky rainstorms in December that we deal with. All right, now we'll take it inside and take a look. This is kind of your entryway to the boarding gate area. So it's if you've flown in and out of our airport, you've seen it's a little bit cramped in there now, but this will be after you exit the TSA checkpoint and move up into the boarding gate area. So a lot more space there. Some of the flooring is going down this week, so it's pretty exciting. The terrazzo flooring is being installed. This is another picture of the hold room and just kind of how expansive that's gonna be. There'll be some new opportunities for concessions in there as well. We did maintain kind of that open ceiling area. There's a little bit more work to be done up in there, but some of that's been painted. You can see the lights. There's also dormers up high to bring that ambient light in. So that's exciting there to keep that look and feel, the Low Country there. And then we're real excited to bring in a new feature into the concourse. So this is kind of what we're envisioning for a kind of a centerpiece in there. We're just about to award the concessions contract for the terminal, and this is something that they proposed, which was kind of out of the box. And we're real excited to see this. There'll be a few modifications that we make with our architect team to make sure everything fits in with the program. But we think this could be a great centerpiece, a real nice leisure area for folks as they wait for the aircraft. And then, you know, not everybody's real excited, they get a little nervous about flying sometimes. So, you know, you can self-treat to an extent here if you'd like to. So it'll be a fun concept for the new concourse. And then just to get you up to date on some of the major initiatives that were underway now amidst, you know, 1,000 other smaller projects, but obviously the Terminal Improvements Project, that's slated to finish up early in the spring, and we should be open for business in April. So keep your fingers crossed that we have great weather throughout and that we can continue everything. Most of the outdoor work is completed, but it always helps. And then we've got a few other projects to do, just updating some of the drainage on the airfield, updating the parking lot, and working with your staff. We've got a brand new Planning Director, so I'll be spending some time with Zach to work on the LMO portion that applies to the airport area. And then, of course, we've got the Airport Layout Plan and Master Plan Update, which is just a great opportunity to take a look at, you know, how we work together, how we fit in, how the airport remains a part of the community and work and play together. So with that, it's kind of a short update, but I wanted to just kind of bring you up to speed with what we're doing. And if you've got questions, I'll take them. If not, I'll be happy to sit.
Awesome, thank you. Any questions from Council? Ms. Turner?
Just a quick request. I'm sorry for the, whatever feedback. There we go. When we did the tour, you talked about the artwork and that competition, and is there something you can say about that? I know Ms. Turner helped out with that, so.
Yes, we did make that announcement. Press release went out, I think, a couple of weeks ago from the county. So there's a major glass wall that kind of separates the boarding gate area from looking back into the TSA area. And we had a competition, which probably not the right word for it, but there were entries to submit artwork to cover that entire glass wall, which is really exciting. And we were really looking for, I say we, it wasn't me, it was Councilwoman Turner and a host of others who were on a selection committee who evaluated the artwork. We're looking for kind of that quintessential Low Country feel so that folks who go through the airport, whether they live here and arrive home to that beautiful image, or whether they're vacationing here, get that initial, you know, first touch of the Low Country, that we really be able to achieve that through art. And we were able to do that, and we put that press release out, but I can't even describe what it is other than to say that we've got a beautiful marsh scene with some wildlife involved. And it's a creative piece that I think will really be beautiful up there in the terminal. So a signature piece, I think is iconic. I think folks will be taking pictures in front of it as they visit, whether they come back home, whatever it is. But we're excited to have that, and that's one of the beautiful things about this new terminal with the increased space, is I think we've got a lot more opportunity to work on arts and culture in the terminal, because that's really what a lot of people do expect when they travel through airports. And so we've got more opportunities to do that now.
One more question about it. You said you're about to announce about the concessions vendor, but what about local vendors, local businesses, and having opportunities in this new facility?
Thank you for that question. It's a great one. That was actually part of our RFP, was a requirement to incorporate local into that. So there, we've actually got a meeting tomorrow to go through some of the contract details, but that is a mandate within our contract. So you, if you come to this airport looking for a franchise sign, you won't find it. But if you're used to seeing some of the local businesses and products, if you vacation or live here, you'll see those. So we're excited. There'll be a mix, but we were very intentional about bringing in the local businesses.
We'll know about that at some point in the future.
Definitely in April when you come through the terminal.
Okay. All right, I'll book my flight now.
Thank you. It's a great Christmas present.
Yes, can you give a little more of an update regarding the master plan and the airport layout plan, like timeline, what the purpose is, and how you'll be receiving feedback and input?
Okay, that's a lot of things right there, but the purpose of a master plan and an airport layout plan, it's kind of one and the same. The master plan is kind of the written version of basically a 20-year plan for the airport. And what that does is that there's several alternatives that get evaluated, and those will all be supported by data. And so all that data, all those alternatives get analyzed, and then they're put into a nice concise report. And by concise, I mean several hundred pages. But given the amount of work that goes into it, it's a concise report. And then the airport layout plan is the graphical representation of that. And the airport layout plan is something that the FAA will then review and approve. So they don't approve a master plan, but they do approve that graphical representation. And what that does, it will show all the existing, you know, facets and facilities on the airport, but it also shows anticipated changes over that 20-year lifespan of the airport. So it'll kind of show how the development may unfold as we move forward. So that's kind of what that stakeholder committee is going to be working on. And the timeline for that usually is about a two-year process. We're trying to condense that a little bit. So we're hoping, we've had the one meeting already, and we've sent feedback to the FAA, so we're about to move into a second meeting with our stakeholder group. And I think that we can probably hope for about it, maybe about a year from now to wrap that up if things go smoothly, but that's kind of what we're hoping for. We want to fast track that a little bit because we think that we've got a pretty, we've got a great group, number one, to work with is our stakeholder group that represents many, many constituencies across the island. So we're excited about that, and if it didn't answer your question, just follow up.
How are you gonna get feedback and input?
Thank you, feedback and input. Well, there is a public portion of this. So anytime you do a master plan, and we call the airport layout plan just ALP, anytime you update these, since we, an airport is a public facility, you do solicit public input. So we will have some sessions with like kind of a public hearing similar to what you had last week with the bridge information. So something similar to that where we have informational boards set up and an opportunity to talk to members of the stakeholder group and some of the consultants as well, to just ask what's going on so that people understand what that may look like. So there will definitely be a public portion of it.
Yes, just to sort of follow up on Councilwoman Turner's question, I guess more of a statement, Mr. Rembold. You mentioned that as far as the architectural on the new building, we were having discussions with the town staff and design review board very early on to make sure we got what we were looking for. And we're also going to have discussions with our planning team as far as the land management rewrite and how that affects the airport. So in those two cases, the town has, I guess, agencies or organizations, whatever you may call them, to help with that process. But the master plan, we don't have a airport master plan committee, right? And, you know, we appreciate Ms. Turner being on the airport's board, but I think what we're looking for as a council is an opportunity to weigh in as a whole through that process, okay? The stakeholders obviously are going to be very meaningful with their comments and whatnot, but I think there's an expectation from the community here on Hilton Head that this town council have some opportunity to weigh into the master plan in some degree, okay? So I just offer that as hopefully an opportunity for us to have that discussion at this level to sort of give our blessing along the way.
Well, thank you for that. And I think if you hearken back to the last update that was done in 2009, 2010 timeframe, that was indeed the case where both of the governments got together to say grace over the plans. I would anticipate something very similar. That's what I would recommend certainly to my bosses. I can't answer for them here, but I certainly would recommend that that's the way to go, especially when you are the town that has the airport in your jurisdiction. So absolutely, we've got staff and council represented on that stakeholder committee, so that will give you, you know, between them and myself coming to update you, keep you updated as we go, but obviously from an approval standpoint, I think it's important to have both of the governments weigh in.
Crawford. How are things looking for moving into Phase 2, dealing with remodeling the existing building?
Well, if you're asking about that naming opportunity, it's still open, sir. So we're willing to talk to you. I can meet you outside afterwards.
I'll write you a check.
I've got a form for you to fill out, but we're still working on the funding for that, so that's the biggest challenge. As I may have mentioned out there at the tour that day, we had initially anticipated execute that project in a single phase. That was prior to the 2021 inflation. It kind of went through the roof, and the prices increased by 40%. So it caused us to break into two phases. So we're still working on what that funding package is going to look like. We have, I won't say completely exhausted FAA funding, but we've met kind of their statutory max for a terminal, for any airport towards the terminal. There are some other grant opportunities through the FAA to a lesser degree that will still apply for, but it won't equate to full funding. So we're looking at that, whether it's, you know, bonding opportunity, something like that, but it's certainly a challenge. We were also talking with folks at the State House for support. They were huge supporters in the first phase. Jeff Bradley was a big supporter. He really took the topic to the house and found some dollars for. So we're hoping that similar things will happen like that. I spend more time than I probably need to on the phone with DC sometimes trying to rattle the cages up there, but hadn't been very effective lately, as you might imagine. So we're looking at all that to put that funding together, but that funding is always our biggest challenge.
Just from a standpoint of public knowledge, you want to talk about the tower and what you're seeing or not seeing with the government shutdown?
Absolutely. Great question. The good news is that our tower, we have what's called a federal contract tower. So if you go back to 1980, 81, when there was a big aircraft, air traffic controller strike in the present air traffic controller strike, and the president fired the mall, after that happened, there was a new system put in place where a certain portion of towers across the country were staffed by private companies who have a contract with the FAA. We have one of those towers. So while the airport owns the tower, we do not, the staff are not ours, they're not the FAA's, they're private staff. So they are not affected by the shutdown. That's the beauty of it. So they continue to be paid by their company. So we don't have any gaps in our coverage, so that's good. The only federal employees we do have out at the airport are the TSA agents. Hopefully, you see them still smiling a lot, because what we've done is I partnered on the very first day or when we heard this was happening with Bill Miles in the chamber, and we reached out to local businesses. And we've been able to provide lunch to the TSA agents so far every single day since the shutdown began. So if anybody's interested in buying lunch, literally, only 12 agents are there at lunchtime. If anybody wants to buy 12 lunches and support these folks who have now received their first $0 paycheck, we'll certainly be happy to talk to you. But we're glad to provide that support. A lot of times, they're the unsung workers in the airport. So we feel it's our duty to help them out.
All right. Awesome. Well, thank you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate your time.
All right, move along. Now we have the Beaufort County Single Use Bag Survey Results from Juliana Zadik, from Environmental Long Range Planner from Beaufort County. Sadie?
Oh, is that what we're doing? I'm sorry. Let me what you do. I apologize. You go for it. I apologize. I'll introduce myself while she's pulling this up. I am Juliana Zadik. I'm the Environmental Long Range Planner. I know several of you have already heard this presentation. I have tried to make it a lot shorter for you all today. So I'm going to be covering some high level stuff early on, and then we'll get into our survey results. So we'll go ahead and get started. So Beaufort County Council has directed staff to take a look at our 2018 plastic bag ordinance and find ways that we may make amendments in order to strengthen it. So staff has been making efforts to achieve that. And what I'm updating you all on today are the steps that we have taken thus far. And I'm going to go over a few reasons why we are considering changing our 2018 ordinance. And our changes are to include five additional unnecessary single-use plastics in varying degrees. I'll get into that detail. One of the biggest reasons is that waste reduction is a necessary strategy to prolong the life of our landfill, which has limited capacity and a limited lifetime. The five unnecessary single-use plastics that are being considered as a part of our amendments are not recyclable. So the only way to really handle these and their impact to the landfill is on the front end. They also contribute, these five unnecessary single-use plastics, to the litter issue here in Beaufort County, which is a, it's an issue here in Beaufort County. Our litter has an impact negatively on stormwater management infrastructure when it gets from the roadways into those systems. It also impacts the wildlife that we share our homes with through entrapment, entanglement, and starvation. And particularly plastics, once they are in the environment, they break down into microplastics where they can enter the food web and have an impact in contaminating the seafood that we all enjoy locally here in the Low Country and that we have festivals celebrating. Which means that these plastics make their way into our bodies. Virtually everywhere scientists have looked in the human system for microplastics, they have found them. The most common types of microplastics found in the studies that I've reviewed are stemming from polypropylene and polyethylene, which make three of the five items that we are considering for the plastic bag ordinance amendments. Microplastic toxicity or contamination is linked with higher levels of cancers and diseases. Unfortunately, there's not meaningful action being taken place on a global or federal or even a state level on unnecessary single-use plastics. We have found from experience up and down the coast of South Carolina that local action has the greatest impact. So with that in mind, County Council has directed us, staff, to take a look into this. We pulled together a working group with representation from the Keep Beaufort County Beautiful Board, which we have here today, the Coastal Conservation League, which helped with the 2018 plastic bag ordinance, and the Port Royal Sound Foundation. And several departments from Beaufort County are working on this together as well. So Stormwater, Solid Waste Management, our Public Information Office, and our Planning and Zoning Department, which I represent. The working group got together, and earlier this year, we deployed a survey for just under three months. This survey targeted two different audiences, our businesses and our residents, because we understand any changes to our 2018 plastic bag ordinance will impact these audiences differently. The surveys tested regulatory preferences of these audiences. And because we wanted to make sure we had as many responses as we possibly could get, we deployed a media and business outreach campaign. And of note, a lot of things went on, and I'm happy to get into that. But of note, we worked with our Chambers of Commerce to make sure that their contact list were aware of this survey. And we worked with restaurant groups as well, and hospitality associations, both north and south of the Broad, to make sure we were reaching the businesses that we know may feel these impacts more strongly than other businesses. And we ended up with a whopping 6,200 total responses to our surveys in just under three months. We had 138 business responses and 6,062 resident responses. On the screen in front of you, you all are looking at pie charts of the geographic distribution of respondents for both surveys. And you can see that they're pretty similar. And we had a relatively even representation for the geographic regions of our county. So about a third of the respondents came from Hilton Head, a third from the Bluffton, Okati area, and a third from the north of the Broad area. And this tracks relatively well with our population trends throughout the county. And it signals a region-wide consensus on what's to be done with these five single-use plastics through our survey results. So I will get into that for you all now. A question that was asked of both of our businesses and our residents is how strongly you support or oppose a complete ban, which was presented in all caps in the question, so no one could miss it. On these five single-use plastics, they are thick plastic bags, styrofoam containers, styrofoam cups, plastic utensils, and plastic straws. Survey respondents could elect their level of support or opposition for each item. The dark blue is opposition, the brown is support. And so we were pretty amazed to see the level of support that came out across the board for eliminating and replacing each of these five items from our residents. And I pulled the Hilton Head Island zip code responses, because I thought you all would be interested in seeing those results. And you can see here for our residents, it virtually mirrors what we saw countywide. Our businesses were asked the same question, and they largely came back with majority support for complete elimination and replacement for each of these five items. But what is noteworthy is that plastic utensils and plastic straws had higher levels of opposition from our businesses. And this sends a signal that we may not be able to take the same strategy for every single item. There might be compromises that need to be made along the way. And I pulled our business respondents as well. And interestingly, they had, you have the high levels of support, but their levels of opposition, I think they mirrored as well. Yeah, they're a little bit less than what we were seeing countywide. Now, because we understand that we may need to take different tacks for each item, we fortunately had the foresight to ask our survey respondents which type of regulatory action they thought would be best or most appropriate for each item. The four choices they had to choose from was taking no action, so that's the peach color. None of these was the answer. Dark blue is by request only. This means you don't get these items unless you request them. So if you're at a restaurant, a straw will not be given to you unless you ask for it. Customer fee is the light blue. And a ban or complete elimination and replacement is the brown color. And we were really interested to see, in general, there's interest in regulation. At no point did taking no action come out as the top response. But we do have varying types of preferences for regulations. So for our residents, plastic bags and the styrofoam items, the preference is to completely eliminate and replace these. But for plastic utensils and plastic straws, we saw by request only come out at the top, or even for the plastic straws. But essentially, by request only seems like a more appropriate regulatory action to take for plastic utensils and plastic straws. Our businesses, oh, this is our Hilton Head Island residents, and you can see that it also mirrors what we saw at the county pretty closely. And then our businesses felt pretty much the same as well. I think what's interesting to note is that while we got by request only as the strongest for our plastic utensils, businesses were more supportive of bans, a complete elimination or replacement for plastic straws, which was interesting to see. And when it came to Hilton Head Island businesses, it was more support across the board for a complete elimination replacement, complete bans for each item. So one of, one of the things that we've noticed as a result of our results is that this reflects a region-wide trend that we're seeing up and down the South Carolina coast. So here is a chart of these five items and how they have been considered or not by a lot of our neighbors to the north. And all five of them are seeing a lot of action, where communities are getting rid of them, or taking on, in some cases, by request only. Which means any action that we take here locally will be magnified by those efforts that are already in place. We also heard lots of concerns amongst ourselves, from our council members, and in our survey results, about cost concerns. Now, you all have been handed an updated chart. This is vendors that we can access locally and their prices, differences between our traditional plastic items and our more eco-friendly items. The chart that you see here on the screen is a global average, so it doesn't necessarily reflect what we might experience here. So we wanted to make sure to pull those more localized price points. And what you'll see in your chart, that the most expensive price difference that you're dealing with is for the nine-inch by nine-inch takeout container at the very bottom, where the plastic styrofoam takeout container is eight to nine cents less expensive than the eco tableware. So that can seem pretty big. But when it comes to the particular type of regulation that we are looking at for our styrofoam takeout containers, it's not outlawing plastic containers, so they could go to traditional plastics. It's just that styrofoam. So just keeping that in mind. Otherwise, it's really only pennies more that we're dealing with transitioning between some of these items. We also pulled case studies to understand if by request only is an effective regulatory tool for these items. And what we found out of Red Bank, New Jersey, that it is indeed an effective way of handling things. Businesses there in just under a year saw a 94% reduction in the number of plastic cutlery, or the number of people who walked away with plastic cutlery and their takeout orders, which equated to about 1.5 million pieces of plastic cutlery that did not make its way into the waste stream, which is about 10,000 pounds of waste that was saved from getting into the landfill. So it can be a really effective method. It means that businesses can still use the materials that they are used to, they just don't have to hand them out for everyone unless they've been asked to. And in the long term, that can help save them money, because they're holding that stock and not giving it up as much or as frequently. So the survey recommendations from our business and our resident respondents are pretty clear. We want to see a complete elimination and replacement of our styrofoam cups and takeout containers and the thick plastic bags that were not captured in that 2018 plastic bag ordinance. And they prefer to see by request only regulation for our plastic utensils and plastic straws. So where are we in the process? So I am going around with some of my partners to present to all of the partners that we have in the 2018 plastic bag ordinance. That ordinance was adopted in a unified way throughout the county. So all of the municipalities in the county did that together, because that's the greatest impact that we can have with that. And so a part of me being here is updating you, but also asking for your feedback on what we're considering, and also hoping to solicit your partnership in moving forward with amendments to these ordinances. And I'd be happy to discuss that with you all more, how you may think that can move forward or not. Once we have gone through our roadshow with our 2018 partners in the plastic bag ordinance, we'll begin developing amendment language based on the feedback that we get and creating an implementation plan. And we do have some ideas about what that's going to look like. Here on this slide, these are all of the sources that are cited in the presentation, so that you can take a look at these primary sources if you'd like to see them. But I do want to call your attention to the link in the top right corner. That is the whole survey report. That includes all of the questions that we ask. If you'd like to take a look at that. And I am ready to answer questions if you have them.
Questions from council. Mr. Brown?
Thank you for your efforts here. I guess my first question is, look at the graphs, focusing a little bit more on the business side at the moment, okay?
I understand.
Because that's where there's going to be financial effect. The folks that are, not this one, there's one that says that you want to, you don't want to, or undecided.
Yes.
I am curious on the reasoning behind undecided, because if I take those numbers, they could go either way, either they would like or not like. But the reasoning behind why they're undecided, that we need to understand that a bit better.
Okay.
So that if there's any mitigation that needs to be done, we understand it.
In order to get them to go one way or the other.
Yes, absolutely. Okay. I think that's important for the conversation. The other piece, so the, the containers, the cups, utensils, and straws, you know, that's mainly within the food and beverage industry. But the plastic bags is more of a retail side. And I'm curious, there's no price comparison on your chart as far as the plastic bag is concerned.
Okay.
As far as where we're going or trying to go, okay? I think that will be important as well. I'm very curious as to what that product may look like and the cost behind it. There was a significant difference in the cost when we went from the inner plastic bags to the thicker plastic bags. So the alternative, I think we saw it in the blind at the moment, but we definitely didn't know that information.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Other comments? Bryson?
Thanks very much for coming to us. I saw the presentation, and you might recognize my face before the Saloco Board. And well done. Very impressed. And thanks to Beaufort County Council and its staff, the county staff, for undertaking this. You talked about outreach to the business community. And I'm grateful that you've shown us slides with regard to Hilton Head residents and Hilton Head businesses and the impact. What kind of outreach efforts were used with Hilton Head businesses during the survey?
Yes. So we worked with the Bluffton and Hilton Head Chamber of Commerce to help reach their contacts. We also did a postcard door-to-door business campaign. And I didn't touch on that in this presentation, because I didn't want to get too bogged down in the weeds, but I'm glad you asked about it. So this is the postcard here. We wanted to make sure that we were getting in front of the faces of businesses as much as possible. And so members of our working group, including folks from the Keep Beaufort County Beautiful Board, and Jean, I believe you were a part of this as well, took these postcards with the QR code that went directly to the survey, and went door-to-door in business districts on Hilton Head and in Bluffton, in order to try to reach as many folks as possible. I personally was not a part of that, but I know that our committee, our working group did do that effort.
And a C-year, multi-disciplinary working group. And I know some of those are connected to the sea turtle patrols. I'll say plural, because we have a couple of groups. So their reports to us are about all of the trash that's found on our beaches. So is there any input from them in this survey results?
I can't say for sure if they were represented in the survey results, although we'd be happy to reach out to turtle groups and get specific input on how we can go about with all of this. I know that we worked with folks from the Outside Foundation and through the Coastal Conservation League and the Port Royal Sound Foundation, which have ties with some of these sea turtle groups. So my best guess is they have been at least informed about it, but I don't know specifically. There are some comments. We have comments from folks that touch on sea turtles. It seems the biggest theme in why people were supportive was more for environmental reasons and then litter reasons. And so a lot of the environmental reasons had to do with sea turtles. But I don't know for sure who represents a sea turtle group or not.
It might be good to take a look at, I know the town has some data on trash collecting on the beaches.
Okay.
That might be additional information about why this might be needed. And as I recall, the county adopts amendments to its code to address additional treatments, if you will, whether it's manning or by request only. And I'm thinking the town also did something for our ordinances. And I would ask the town manager and the representative from the town attorney, once, I'll say it this way, once Beaufort County amends their ordinance, then is it necessary for the town to also adopt amendments to our ordinance regarding this? The manager's shaking his head.
Preferable, because we will enforce as well. And so the municipal code, unless we're simply going to rely upon Beaufort County to enforce, look at Bob somewhere in the crowd. So typically, that's how we'd follow suit.
And the other question I asked at the Saloco Board was about the timing for possible consideration. And I said it was okay. I wasn't afraid to ask, because the county chair was sitting beside of me. And I think the first quarter is the target, the first quarter of next year?
Yes, when we bring those amendments forward, yes, ma'am.
That's when the amendments will be considered by County Council. So we might be looking to follow in step after that.
Okay.
Ms. Turner? Ms. Turner?
Thank you for your presentation today. It was very thorough in all the materials, and I feel very guilty sitting up here because I have a styrofoam cup and a plastic straw that I am using right now. So I will acknowledge it. I did have a question about the thicker plastic bags, because I know as you took a first bite of the apple on this, you went from the single-use bag to this thicker bag, thinking that we use multiple times. So what has the experience been? And just wanting to follow up on that piece.
Yes, so the thick plastic bags, which I'm sure you all are aware of, are within the code, right? They meet the ordinance that was originally adopted in 2018 because of their thickness. And so generally what we see, at least anecdotally from moving around in the areas that I am, I see our smaller businesses and many of our box, big box stores are using the paper bags is what we often see. It is other big box stores that have gone to the thick plastic bags. And that might not be the case across the board, but that seems to be the trend. And in the comments that we received throughout the county, I saw time and time again, a handful of big box stores that were specifically called out because of those thick plastic bags. So what it looks like is the ordinance is being adhered to, but the thick plastic bag wasn't necessarily, it was one of those unintended consequences of the 2018 plastic bag ordinance. And so at a minimum, what the county is going to try to do is to address those bags. As you've mentioned, they are often advertised as reusable. We did ask questions in our survey about how people treat each of the items after they've received them. And our thick plastic bags had a large response that said that they were kept and reused. Some of the examples that were provided were as trash liners for their little trash cans or a lot of folks are using them for kitty litter. And it's just, while it is reused in those cases, maybe not so much for the trash liner, but at least for kitty litter, that's a one extra reuse that it's going through. And so it's still quickly making its way into the waste stream. And so there's kind of a concern of trying to stop unnecessary plastics from entering the waste stream. So that's where we're sort of coming from on all of that. Does that help answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Brown?
Yes.
After listening to my colleagues here, I'll start with sort of my thoughts after Ms. Turner's comments. It seems to me that if the intent of the county and us as well would be to obviously protect the environment, but also when we talk about land use life, there's a cost savings there as well, okay? So I'm going to sort of reemphasize the whole conversation around mitigation, particularly when it comes to some of these items, okay? If we don't want plastic bags to go to the landfill, even if it's after the third time, well, then what are we going to do for our business community to head them in a direction of using a different product, okay? And I think you're going to have to bring mitigation into the conversation to make that happen. Secondly, Ms. Bryson was asking about the outreach. So if there's going to be further outreach, particularly to the business community, and I appreciate the ground, the grassroots effort with knocking on doors and handing out postcards, but a lot of the areas, at least on Hilton Head, they have merchants associations, okay? And those that head up those merchant associations will be able to get a better idea as the consensus of their merchants, okay? So I just offer that as a way to engage.
Thank you. And if it's okay, I wanted to add a little bit of information about our implementation plan. And one of the things that we are working on collecting are grant resources for financial assistance and moving from some of these traditional plastic items to the more eco-friendly items that might end up in the amendments. We're also looking at the county's implementing a green business plan, which helps to incentivize moving towards kind of more greener strategies from our business communities, as well as training and outreach programs. Now, these are all things that we're going to be looking into, so your comments are very helpful in helping to make that as robust and comprehensive as possible. So thank you.
All right, any other comments? Gilana, thank you.
Thank you, thank you too.
Appreciate it. All right, so now we'll hear from Angie Stone on the Beaufort County 250th Revolutionary War Anniversary.
Mr. Mayor, Town Council, Mr. Orlando, thank you for the opportunity to be here. I feel a little bit like I'm presenting a report in front of the teacher because Rich Thomas, who is leading this effort for Beaufort County, is in the audience. So as I told some folks yesterday, my job is the best one here at the town. I get to do a lot of celebrating, and this is yet another celebration that we've got going on. The Revolutionary War, as you all know, was from 1775 to 1782. We are celebrating the birth of our nation. It's happening on all levels of our government. Am I on the right one here? We've got, excuse me, at the national level, events are being planned. South Carolina has a committee, as does Beaufort County. For Hilton Head Island, our Office of Cultural Affairs, Natalie Harvey, who you hear her name quite a bit, is busy helping with this effort. The other party on the island that's really participating in this is the Director of the Heritage Library. Both of their websites are here. In terms of events here in Beaufort County for the remainder of this year, we've got a few. Zion Cemetery has one today, and then again next week. Heritage Library has a lecture, Mr. Thomas is doing that one, "The Barbadian Clone." And if anyone wants to know, it's not a sci-fi movie, it is a reference to our South Carolina government being a clone of Barbados. Another Coastal Discovery Museum has a couple of lectures going on later this month. And then in December, the Beaufort County Library in Beaufort has another presentation. We've already had multiple events, including one that is ongoing. There's a story quilt from the Heritage Library called "A Stitch in Time." It's a traveling exhibition. It's on display at the Island Rec right now. For 2026, which is the 250th anniversary of the signing of the Declaration of Independence, we have concerts and performances here on the island. We have tentative plans for a symphony orchestra performance. I'll get to that in a second on how you guys can help. We've got Harbor Town and Shelter Cove that are expanding their fireworks presentations in celebration of that historic event. And then Coastal Discovery Museum is going to host some field trips for Beaufort County students to help them really appreciate the Revolutionary War and its impact here on Hilton Head in Beaufort County. So the support that's needed from council, potentially, the symphony event is going to have a price tag. I'm not necessarily saying that we will have to support the whole thing, but that will be something that will be considered in the upcoming budget by you all. The Coastal Discovery Museum field trip, we don't have an amount for that yet, but there is a cost associated with that, so there may be a request for some funding there. And then funding for events throughout the rest of the celebration period. If you want to stay informed, there are some sites that you can, you can visit, the National, South Carolina, and the Beaufort County sites. And that is all I have. Are there any questions?
Questions from council, comments? Ms. Bryson?
Thanks for this report. One of my constituents asked what's the town of Hilton Head Island doing for the 250th anniversary? So thanks for this. And I'm guessing that we have a link on our town website about all of this information? If not, I would encourage us to do that.
We have not duplicated the Beaufort County, the Beaufort County site on ours. We can certainly put a link to the calendar that they have on the 250th anniversary site there for you.
Or even the presentation you've done today, it could be a link to that, which gives in links to the Beaufort County site. So maybe something as simple as that.
Absolutely.
I'm not the communications director, but just a suggestion.
I'll check with ours.
All right, sounds good. And the other one, just quickly, Mayor, I've come from North Carolina, as most folks know, if you look at the North Carolina state flag, there are two dates on it. May 20, 1775, Halifax Resolves, sorry, Mecklenburg Declaration of Independence. So May 20th is my birthday, that's why I know it's on the state flag.
Okay.
The other date is April 12, 1776, and that is the Halifax Resolves. And my dad's birthday, April 12. Not, neither one of us were born in 1775 or 1776, but I have to always add that when we're thinking about the bubbly snowboard.
Any other comments or questions? So Angie, what's next? Right, you know, is there going to be a request coming to council for funding and layout of plans and all that? So I just kind of laid that out for us.
Yes, sir, as we build the budget for the Office of Cultural Affairs coming up for next fiscal year, we will include any asks that we have for events on Hilton Head Island. The field trips that are happening at the Coastal Discovery Museum, that was one we didn't necessarily have on our radar. There may be some requests to the town manager to try to figure out if we can offer some support there, fund funding from some of our other pools of money.
All right, Mayor, that sparked a question I had. If some of these events are occurring in July 2026, wouldn't we need to provide some funding during the current fiscal year through a budget amendment if we're so inclined to consider something?
We will address that with the town manager if that's the case.
All right, any other questions, comments? All right.
Before I leave, I would like to say a huge thank you to Rich Thomas because he's done the yeoman's work in this and truly everything that's going on is a result of his initiative.
Yeah, thank you. Rich is the man for the job.
He is the man.
All right, moving on, general reports from town council. Any general reports? Mr. Brown?
Just one, Mr. Mayor, thank you for sending out the link to the Beaufort Jasper Housing Trust Symposium. I think it's on next week, the 12th. I know we will not have a community member assigned to that board before that symposium, so I just encourage us all to try to make it, make sure that there's a report that comes back to us as far as what we learned. Thanks.
Bryson?
One quick thing on the town manager's report. Last night at my community meeting, I had several folks ask about the new flashing beacons, I can't remember the proper term for them, the crossings, pedestrian bicycle crossings between North Ridge and Sea Turtle Marketplace. They ask about signage for folks. As I drove through there a couple of times today, I noticed there is a, you know, pedestrian crossing ahead, there's yield here. But one of the questions was about how do folks know about it? And I said I would at least ask the town manager to consider perhaps some sort of news release or a communication on the website for folk, local folks at least, to be able to have the instructions about what do you do? Because folks come from different jurisdictions, there's different rules. As I said to them last night, South Carolina doesn't do a good job of protecting pedestrians and bicyclists. It's what SCOD would approve, SCODT, SCDOT would approve. So if we could consider something like that to inform the public about, now that we have those up and running, what do I do? Thank you.
Thank you. Any others? Mr. Brown?
Just to follow up on that, I'm not on Facebook that often, but there's a pretty cool video on Facebook with that new beacon system that the town put out. It had somebody crossing, people stopping, so I just, you know, the more that we can put it out there, the better off. Thank you.
Any other general reports? Okay, seeing none, we'll move into reports. Mrs. Becker, I don't think is online. No, okay, so we'll come back to her next month for the Low Country Area Transportation Study. Mr. Alfred, Low Country Council of Governments.
Our report.
Thank you. Ms. Turner, Beaufort County Airports.
Already had an update, and the next meeting is November 13th.
Thank you. Ms. Bryson, Southern Loco Regional Board.
Yes, Saloco Board met on Tuesday, October 28 in Bluffton. And one of the topics was a presentation from Ms. Zadik, did I say that correctly? Which was great and good questions there by representatives of the board. So since we've heard that report today, I won't repeat anything here. We also had an update from Jasper County Representatives on their successful transportation sales tax referendum and how they did that, and a little bit of information on the projects that are planned. For the November agenda, which will be November 25, 10:00 a.m. in Hardyville Council Chambers. And the report sent will be Hilton Head happenings. So I know the mayor and manager will be working on that presentation, also happenings from Bluffton. Also, the Beaufort County update, a brief update on the possible 2026 referendum. Council Chair asked that that be short because they're still working on that. And then we will also talk about possible agenda items to be considered by Saloco during 2026. And a couple of the suggestions that I made were that there are a lot of transportation projects that are going on now within the two county area, and it might be good to show a consolidation of where all those transportation projects are occurring so that we can have a regional approach to looking at transportation studies and activities. Also, to look at water and sewer projects because the Beaufort Jasper Water and Sewer Authority is coming up with a master plan, and we need to be looking at regional needs for water and sewer facilities. And there's more items on that list, and I'll cover those after the November meeting. Thank you.
Mr. Brown, Island Recreation Association.
I'm a year on Hilton Head with the cool weather, so a lot of activity as far as folks being outside. The mac and cheese festival was a hit. The Satoma Club was partnered with that, very successful. Eighteen vendors served their best mac and cheese. I understand the Smokehouse won first place. 50th Anniversary Multi-Hole Regatta was held this past weekend at the Beach House. There were 70 boats and sailors from all over the world in the U.S. came to Hilton Head to participate in this four-day event. Annual Hilton Head Island Oyster Rose will be this weekend. Friday night's All You Can Eat Event still has tickets available at islandreccenter.org. Saturday, the main event will be at the Low Country Celebration Park from 11:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Registration for the Turkey Trot is underway. The dome for the pool will be installed the week of November 17. And finally, ongoing registration for many youth and senior activities available at the islandreccenter.org website.
Thank you. Beaufort County Economic Development Corporation, I had a meeting with L3 Harris about a month ago, and there was a grant that was awarded from Beaufort County Economic Development Corporation to them to hit a certain number of employees. They have not been able to hit that number of employees, but have been farming out work to additional local businesses for those jobs that they can't fill. There's a $10,000 grant that is due if they do not provide the employees. We have extended that grant with a commitment from them that they will stay until at least 2029. But if they do vacate before that, then that grant would be due and payable. So all about working with the constraints that are, you know, with employees in the area, but that was the main thing that would affect us coming out of the Beaufort County Economic Development Corporation meeting. So Mr. Brown, Gulliguchi Historic Neighborhoods Community Development Corporation.
CDC will meet on November 19 at 10:00 a.m. We will be receiving an update on the Wayfinders application and the CDC website since their official launch in October. Additional items on the agenda include discussion regarding the renaming of the Rowing and Sailing Center at Squire Pope Community Park, discussions of the community organizations active in disasters, CODA, they have a proposal for us to consider, and consideration of the 2026 meeting schedule. And as the town manager mentioned in his report, there will be a Money Talk Small Business Workshop on November 18 from 5:30 to 7:00 p.m.
All right, thank you. Ms. Becker's not here, so we will not have a report today on community development and public services. And then Mr. Brown, back to you for finance administration.
Yes, sir. The FNA Committee will meet on November 18 at 10:00 a.m. The agenda includes a financial update for fiscal year '26. We also will, receiving a funding request from LRTA, Palma La Breeze, as we heard from them a couple meetings ago. Consideration of a resolution recommending the approval of the Town of Hilton Head Island Accommodation Tax Advisory Committee for the calendar year 2026 grants. They also have consideration of an ordinance of the Town of Hilton Head Island authorizing the issuance of general obligation debt bonds. Consideration of a resolution for reimbursement of the Fire and Rescue Headquarters acquisition.
Thank you. Next, we move on to consent agenda. We have agenda items 8A and 8B. These items were approved by a vote of seven to zero at the first reading held on October 21st. There have been no changes since approval, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
And has anybody signed up to speak on this item?
Chester Williams.
Passes. And we have a first from Ms. Bryson, second from Mr. Alfred, all those in favor of sticking five are raising your right hand. So moved, six, zero. So public comment, moving on to non-agenda items section of the public comment section, 2-5-70 of the town code limits each person to one three-minute comment when addressing council. At the end of your three minutes, you are asked to conclude your comments. Please maintain a decorum suitable for the meeting and refrain from using any profane, abusive, or obscene language. If you have any... If you have any materials you'd like to give to town council, please give them to town clerk after you are finished speaking. Kim, does anybody sign up to speak?
Mr. Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, uh, ladies and gentlemen, I just want to say what a refreshing change it is to have a non-contemptious meeting. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. Kim, was there anybody else signed up to speak?
No, sir.
Thank you for the levity there, Jeff. Uh, Mr. Orlando, do we have a, a need to go to executive session?
Yes, Mayor Perry, as shown on executive session, items 10A, B, C, D, and E.
Do I have a motion to go to executive session?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, please stick a five or raising your right hand. Six, oh, we're in executive session.
Mr. Brown, do we have any actions coming out of executive session?
Yes, sir. I move to approve first reading of an ordinance authorizing the execution and recording of a declaration of covenants regarding workforce and the execution and delivery of a long-term ground lease of real property, both related to real property owned by the town of Hilton Head Island, South Carolina, and providing for severability and an effective date.
Have a second?
Second.
Mr. Brown, would you want to come up and make some comments real quick for the public?
They would be able to start marketing to other folks. I could talk more about this during second reading if there are any questions, but I just want counsel to be aware of this because this is the deviation of the approved development agreement. There's also provisions about the workforce housing grant, that's the million dollar grant. There are provisions about insurance, maintenance, and other There are provisions about insurance, maintenance, and other legal requirements. But this is formalizing the development agreement, and I want to give a really special thank you to the North Point Housing Advisory Committee because we wouldn't be here today without their considerable input. And thank you to the town manager and all of whom for the opportunity to be involved in this mission.
All right. Thank you. But any questions for Mr. Brown at this time?
Just one additional comment. As I understand it, I'm sorry, I'm getting an echo. Does that help if I back up a little bit? How's that? In that we're taking action now without a full presentation earlier in our meeting because of a deadline for One Street and its partners to be able to close on their financing before the end of this fiscal, end of this calendar year. Is that correct? So that's why we're doing it now. And then second reading would be at our next regularly scheduled meeting, which I think is the first Tuesday in December. Is that accurate? Is that why we're going ahead tonight?
Yes.
And as you said, we'll have a fuller presentation when hopefully more people are here to be able to see that and to learn about what you said in a little more detail at our second reading. And some nice pictures. Thank you.
Other questions or comments? So thank you for that. It's important that we get that out there. And if for some unforeseen reason that a Beaufort County resident ended up living there, hopefully they would end up being an employee on Hilton Head. So that's an opportunity to recruit. So we've got a first by Mr. Brown, second by Mrs. Bryson. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. So moved six zero. Mr. Brown?
I move to approve first reading authorizing the execution and delivery of a non-exclusive easement for ingress egress and utilities and providing for severability and effective date.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion from council members? Any discussions from the public?
One, as I understand it, is this access for HHI PSD to the North Point project? Do I have the right one?
And access easement to the PSD's property through North Point.
Yeah, thank you, sir.
Thank you. All right. All those in favor, the motion was made by Mr. Brown, second by Ms. Bryson. All those in favor, signify by raising your right hand. So moved six zero. Mr. Brown?
I move to approve a resolution authorizing the execution and delivery of the Fifth Amendment to the January 14, 2021 contract of employment by and between the town of Hilton Head Island and Mark Orlando, which includes an extension of contract from February 20, to February 21 of 2031, base salary increase of four percent, and a $25,000 bonus.
Is there a second?
Second.
We've got a first and a second. Any discussion from the public? Seeing none, any discussion from council? I will say this, we are very lucky to have that man at the end of this dais. So Mr. Brown made the motion. That one. Mr. Orlando, I would say. So Mr. Brown made the motion, Ms. Bryson second. All those in favor, signify by raising your right hand. So moved six zero. Is there anything else, Mr. Brown? Is there a motion to adjourn? We are adjourned.